A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where rich are dense, one nation under God, in freedom, liberty, and justice for all. I owe, I owe a swell.
All right, non-public meeting minutes from the February 13th, 2025 meeting.
I would make a motion to accept the non-public meeting minutes.
Second. Okay, motion is set for the non-public meeting minutes from February 13th. Meeting by Les, second by Scott. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have an entertaining motion to seal the minutes of tonight's non-public session.
So.
I think that was a motion to seal the non-public minutes.
Indefinitely.
No, sorry.
Motion by Scott, second by Les. Yes, that's what I was trying to say.
I was trying to find the term.
To seal the minutes of tonight's non-public session. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda. Easy one.
It's off on the screen if you need it. Can you see it or you want to data?
I, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda, accounts payable payment manifest dated 2/19/25, preview approval for veterans credit on MAPLOT 216-045, review approval of updated paperwork for all veterans credit on MAPLOT number 112-024, distribution of funds from accrued wages in the amount of $3,157.88, approval and adoption of the 2025 wage scale.
Second.
Discussion? I would just say, Les, you wrote as 112-024, it's actually 014.
Yeah. And also that.
Lot pick in my hands.
I can't see that far. I didn't blow it up at all. In that folder too, just so when you go to sign, there were three land use change taxes from last week. They were missed backs and in signatures.
Okay.
So just they only need signatures.
All right, alls in favor?
Aye.
Hub 66, come on up.
Oh, okay.
Just so we can hear it, that's all I.
Oh, okay.
Forget another chair there.
I have a couple chairs here. So I just wanted to. Oh, I guess I should introduce myself. Yes, I apologize. Andre Aviant from Hub 66.
And Michael Matea with Hub 66.
Mike, we've met before.
Yep. We just wanted to give you guys an update because we're finishing the town now with every remaining area for fiber optic build. And we haven't, you know, spoke with you guys in a while, so we just wanted to give you an update that that's happening. We're starting to go foray next week, not foray, sorry, West Shore Road.
Yeah, actually Christina, are you sharing your screen if you, I don't know if you want to go to the, if you just go to the Hub 66 page? And Bristol, Hub 66 page? I just thought it'd be helpful while you're talking.
Yeah.
I will tell you that my husband, you would have thought had won a million dollar lottery because he was able to get Hub 66 last week.
Oh, Larry, what, Larry, you guys had.
Oh, Senate Drive, it's off of North Main Street.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Yes, he just finished like North Main Street a couple weeks ago.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah. He has your sign, signed probably in here.
Oh, awesome.
And I can say as one of the first ones to have been signed up, but I could be happier because you don't, not normally you, I would ever say anything like that about a utility company.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, we appreciate all of us, your continued support. Sorry, I was opening another thing while I was sitting here.
Okay.
This thing is touchy. All right, let's go.
So like we're, we're starting up West Shore Road next week. We're going to be finishing that whole section of the west side of the lake over the next couple of months here. Simultaneously, there's a road we have to do like up towards like the cell tower up on the northeast corner. We're doing that section.
A lot of work in code travel there.
Yep. And we're also going to be doing this 3A piece in the bottom side of town. Silent tax, and we're still waiting on the licensing on this bottom part. But Eversource just walked through it last week with our, one of our hats. So hopefully we'll have that paperwork done soon. And then we'll be done the whole town for the most part. The only section that we discussed Christina with Fire Department was this area towards Alexandria over here. It's, was it Briar Hill Road?
No. Oh, Bristol.
Bristol Hill Road. So that, that area is a little weird because we're supposed to build it out, but the county is actually building it out too. And we're taking over the county fiber. So we, we're talking to Christina that we're not going to just build it twice. We're going to let the county build it and then we'll, we'll add the, find the whole piece as we build it.
And we talked a little bit about building out of, from Peep Hill at the communication tower aligned back to, you know, directly to the public safety building. But there's some things we have to look into first before we can make that decision, so.
Yep.
Yeah, one of the things I just was going to add is the project was originally scheduled to be complete the end, you know, contractually the end of 2026, so we're expecting to be done here early. So I want to share that news and allow people to be anxious.
Mike, just for your information, I spoke with one of your subcontractors the other day when they were down on South Main Street. The fire alarm wire that's in town is no longer in service.
Okay.
So if for some reason it does be, need to be removed, it can be. Just contact Chief Boros of the Fire Department. He can get in touch with me if there's any questions or whatever. None of that line is in service and like he was saying that would make it feel like a lot easier if they were going to.
Yeah, I'm sure everybody would be a lot happier. Be capable of kind of falling apart.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, that's, and that's not that, it's only about 15 years old.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all that seawater plastic coating is just coming off of.
Oh, I see.
That some dude's work.
What's that?
The some dude's work of that.
Oh, definitely, yep. That's why all the water that I had ordered after that was all without that coating.
So we had something else that.
Yeah, a couple of things actually.
So one of the things we wanted to talk to you about is the state is doing this round of funding for broadband with, it's called BEAT. It was for the letter of funds from the Biden administration. And it got kind of very different, the way they did this round. The way they did it was they, they, the state put its own mapping together of who had internet, who didn't. And then they put this challenge period for all the ISPs to like challenge these addresses and whether they're serviceable or not. And now they published a list of final addresses that we have to get to in order to like apply for the funding. So there's no opportunity to challenge these addresses anymore. And some of the addresses that somehow got through the state's list are places we already service or are about to service, and it's kind of weird that they ended up there. But there's nothing we can do to remove them at this point. So we're putting in a small application for the town of Bristol for those funds, just so that we don't give them to a competitor. So one of the things they're looking for is to get a letter of recommendation from the town on the application. So they'll just ask if we can get a letter of recommendation on that application.
Yeah, so Christina, I had sent a draft for you to look at, to make it easier. You can modify, but requirement is that it's signed by the select board? Or I guess if they grant you the authority to sign on.
Yeah, if you can get it to Christina and so we can review it and then, you know, sure. I mean, obviously we won't look it over and approve it, but, and then we can just approve Christina to sign it for her.
Okay.
When did you send it?
Within the last couple of days.
Got it.
Got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Basically, just the, the purpose of it is if there's multiple providers, they put in a bid for a given community, then there is a score and rubric. Rubric, and part of the rubric is, does the town support it, so.
Last time you just motioned for me to sign it and I did on behalf of you, so.
Excellent.
It was, I don't know if it was BEAT or something.
BMGI, which is a state fund, yeah, the state program.
Great.
Okay. So we just wanted to mention that. Also, it's been a while since we had, and this isn't necessarily a select board question, maybe more Christina, but it's been a while since we really sent out a communication through the town and wanted to be able to update the residents. And certainly we're reaching out to people who have reached out to us. But I don't know if we should still be working with Kate on that or.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kate can put something in the buzz and also on the town's news page too, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to communicate to people that I've got an update. It's been a while since we sent one.
Okay.
And then we just wanted to see if you had questions for us and.
When do you have to have this grant application in?
Uh, in a week.
So can you motion, I can show it to you, it's in my email, but.
If we've done it in the past and.
We did it on another.
You guys okay with, I'm fine with this.
Yeah, we did it on another grant before. It's very, the letters.
I don't even think we need to pull that, I don't think it's.
Well, I think just in case you have to, because it has, if you're signing it, sometimes I have to provide the minutes that says that.
That's what happened the last time.
That's what happened the last time, so. But it's, how do you call it? It's a.
Letter of support?
Letter of support, a B letter of support, it's called.
So I would make a motion for us to direct Christina to sign the letter of support from 66.
Second.
Okay, motion by Les, second by Scott. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Okay, great. So I don't know if you have other questions, anything that you're hearing from the community about Hub 66?
My main concern right now is where Les got that York peppermint penny.
That's a pressing question.
I had a, I just, a coincidental comment. They were working on Overlook Drive one day and I came home. And then we went in the house and that evening we had no internet. So I'm like, what the heck's going on? We had no internet.
Yeah.
So it just so happened, the contractor was working in that area that day and snapped off my coax from the competition. So I had no internet for the night.
Well, time to switch.
I'm switching because I want to redo my, my line to the house, so.
Oh, I see.
I'm just going to, I'll wait till then to put in the conduit and bury it. It's my plan, so.
Okay, well.
But my other neighbors have been very satisfied so far.
Great.
Any questions for you, from you? I know you, you, you guys kind of work.
Yeah.
We're doing, well, we're, we're trying to reestablish our quarterly meetings.
Yeah, it's on the calendar.
We were working on those. That was a good meeting we just had.
Yep.
And then I don't know, do you have any questions about the space upstairs? Because I know sometimes that gets brought up, but I, the other two aren't here, so I just.
I, yes. But I don't know what the original deal was, so I, I, I know there, there has been question about it. Do you, maybe Les, you know historically more?
Originally, I think we were going to have, you would have office space up there and there would be somebody in that office space. And then that's changed over.
That was the verbal. If you read the agreements, it doesn't necessarily say that in writing.
Correct.
But the verbal that was presented previously was that they would have offices and someone would be here. So I just thought I'd mention it because I know that some, I've seen a couple of comments on Facebook as well that they don't have, they didn't have an office to go to.
Right.
But I just wanted to.
Not something that was overly concerning. I just know it's come, the question has been asked a few times and I guess it hasn't been a super high priority to follow up.
Yeah, it's definitely on our roadmap to complete that. And right now we have people located in multiple areas, so we haven't found that it would make sense to just like have one person sit there by themselves. We're trying to figure out, you know, when the right, the timing is right to finish it off.
Yeah, the COVID time, like everyone was working from home, so it just didn't like happen the way it planned. But we still have the intention to build it out and have people working here. And the more we've been expanding, the more everyone's like, oh, are you guys based out of events? Like, oh, we're based out of all these towns, you know? Like, we've kind of, more and more just said we're based out of Bristol, so.
I mean, I, I can say from experience, having had some issues that needed to be dealt with, that I had no problem communication wise, calling just on, by phone. And Mike's been at my house multiple times. And, and no issues whatsoever, so I, I guess it would. My, strictly my opinion, I feel like it'd be more of a feel good thing at this point to have somebody sitting there that would be needed and necessary.
I think ultimately our goal is though is to hire some local people. We do a little tech.
Yeah. I know that the tech, there's the tech review committee chair who would bring that up, so perfect.
We, we did hire a local technician that moved here. Moved here from California and he, he's been doing installs for us and he's worked out great. But our goal is to get some customer service staff out of here at some point.
Yep. That'd be fantastic and we, you know, we'd be happy to work with you.
Great.
Well, thank you guys for coming in.
Thanks for having us. It's great to connect with everyone.
Glad you came.
Good to see you.
We'll chat soon. I'll get you that later.
Oh, yes, thank you so much. And I think that bill of sale to.
Yes, we did sign it. I, I sent it back to the attorney group, sure, if there's anything else I can do, so.
Okay.
The lawyers are always asked.
Well, so our regular attorney just resigned. That's not, sorry.
Oh, really?
Who was that?
News toss.
Our regular attorney just resigned.
Which one?
Was out on medical leave, so. So our, we had two regular attorneys, let me rephrase that, was there. So now I'm trying to go back through everything that.
Not Sean?
No.
Okay.
I'm trying to go back through everything that was sent to one and get it sent to the other, so.
Okay.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Appreciate you coming in.
Thanks, we're very interested in your time.
You too.
You too. Well, I'm tired. Why is it during that?
Uh, election update.
Who was the attorney that's done?
Chris Paulmore.
That was weird. Did you see that?
I haven't seen that in a while.
I haven't either. I was like, where am I?
Your website might text on me.
Did she leave?
No, she said she was staying in our.
Oh, she must not, she must not know that we're in public.
Well, yeah, it's only five, we're running early, so.
Oh, but I advertised this over 5:30.
Well, most.
Oh, we, we.
Great.
Blue driver. Oh, yeah, I should keep it up till eight.
She said she was sticking around.
We're talking about voting.
When's that? That's the 11th, is it, or?
Okay, she's gone.
When, when it's.
It's the 11th.
11th voting. Christine was going to.
No, town meetings the following weekend, so the 15th.
Um, Chris Bean was going to come and I thought Victor was. And I mean, I've not told Victor it's at 5:30 instead of 6:00.
That's fine, let's, let's.
So Rava's going to come in.
Well, we can, there's a lot of things we can cover, so.
Yeah, so if she can come in and we can just keep going.
All right, so cash receipts policy update?
Yeah, so can, can you give it about a few minutes just to make sure that the one other department head that was coming, he shows up, if that's all right?
Okay.
So in your ca, in your folder, there's a couple of cash receipts policies. I did send them out to you last night, or this, early this morning. That's not working. Um, the one labeled. So there are three there. Um, one labeled. There's one that says attorney updates. It was minor changes. Babe attorney came back and changed only the part about the, um, if you go all the way down to section six under number three, he just changed it from payee to payer and he explains why in the notes. Um, and then he also changed number six. He feels it better defines what, what the bullet was trying to accomplish. You didn't see any other issues. This has been reviewed by the department heads. There was a typo and we fixed that. But the other department heads didn't have any other feedback here. So they were comfortable with it. It is a substantial change from the one we had. And if you wanted to look at the substantial change, you can see the one that says edited version.
Unless your computer just won't let you open Word again.
So this is the same thing in three.
Yeah, there's an edited version which shows you the original and then the change, the change is made. There's an attorney feedback because he cleaned it up and decided only to put his two comments in. And then there's a clean version, if you just wanted to look at the clean version.
See, it looks like this one that was edited by Lindsay.
Yes.
And then another one edited with the attorney comments, okay.
And then the one final version.
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the amended cash receipts policy effective February 20th of 2025.
So.
Second.
Second.
Sorry.
Suppose I can second.
Where is Dawn when we need him?
Motion by Scott, second by Les to approve the update, the amended town Bristol cash receipts policy dated February 25th. Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Will you do me a quick favor? I just printed it on the printer down here for them to sign. Thank you. While we're on that, what we're, so now that this is adopted and ready to go out, our plans are to do internal audits of departments. And their proceed, what they're do, making sure that they're, what they're doing with the cash boxes, they're following the procedures for these, and then we can provide recommendations for the, for the ones that may need to follow it differently. Part of why we decided to do the internal audits is we want to make sure everybody's following it. One, and two, we want to make sure we correct anything before the auditors come too, so. And sometimes it also draws attention, if there is something that one department's doing versus another, it might be something that we should be incorporating as well. So, yes, please, thank you. Thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I can jump ahead a few more minutes. I don't know if he's going to show up.
Do you want to start your TA report?
Yeah.
I got my York peppermint penny in the back for.
That's what I choked on. I couldn't, I was like, oh my God, it is.
Remember those commercials with the guy blowing up the, with the York peppermint? You'd open it up and blow it up.
I get the sensation.
Yeah, that's.
That choking sensation.
I also wrote big ones.
Oh, yeah. There were little paragraphs.
Uh, first town report, all items have been submitted, including sign, any of the signed pages, which was the last submission last night. They will print, start binding and will, the deadline, they have to be open to the public is March 4. So we anticipate that, well, what we've done, because this is, we talked to the budget committee about, budget committee chair, about moving the timeline next year for a little bit. Because even though the statute says you can go later, this is why we don't go later. Because it take, it does hold up everything for the town report. So it, it's pushed everything back a little. We talked to the printer and we told her, if you can give us at least 250 of the town reports by that deadline, I, we're not, I'm going to check. So we, I think that's a sufficient number as long as she gives us the rest of them by the Monday after. And that was good too, so. MS 737, the DRA document has been updated, the D, with the DRA and they signed off on Tuesday afternoon. Budget committee came in and everybody signed. We delivered it to a couple of places and have them sign. And the document and the warrant are posted in the lobby. I said by the end of the week, but I've already posted them. We're required to post them and post the date that they are. And then the only thing I have to do is upload a copy that shows the date that they were posted to the Department of Revenue. Um, I've already put them online too, and I figured I'd show you this real quick. So this is the town meeting information page. You can either get to it from the select board page, excuse me, or if you're on the homepage, you do have to go through two links because of the way I set it up. But it's pinned to the top of the news, so 2025 elections and town meeting. Then you just have to click to the information page.
That covers my select board, Collins.
Why?
Because I was trying to remember what date town meeting was the other day. I was thinking it was the 8th and I quickly just went on the website and didn't see it quick, but.
I'm going to add it to the calendar because I didn't think of.
But now you've solved the problem, so.
But I will add it to the calendar too, because I just, let me just write that down so I don't forget. Add dates to the calendar. If it's not already there, I just.
It's not.
So, so we'll add those to the calendar. But this started at the top with the filing period, went down to the petition warrant articles. That was the public hearing on budget. Oops, I can take that comment off. Um, and then, then here's your town elections ballot voting, Tuesday, March 11th. It talks about who the candidates for office are. And then it goes to put proposed zoning amendments. It talks about the zoning amendments. This is the actuals for zoning amendments. This is the ballot language. And I tried to explain that the ballot language is different than zoning amendments. That's what we have to do, so that's there. And then Donna did this real, I think I showed it to you before, but I'll, while we're right here. Donna did this really nice zoning ordinance voters guide. The ballot question is on this side. The explanation about why they're doing it is on the opposite side. And then it talks, it goes from Article 2 all the way down with both of them. It's, it's a nice touch. They're actually in the lobby. They're the ones we're going to have. We gave, we're going to give to Raymond to put out up at voting, so that would be the document people can look at. If they want to look more at the wording. If they want to look more at the wording, they can. But, and that's also on this page, but. That's helpful. I hit the wrong button. In addition to the voters guide, we had, you probably haven't seen this yet. We had John Miller, Andrew Storer produced an informational video. And you click on it, we're not going to play it, but unless you really want to.
I already watched it.
So it is, and they have a survey question too, so did you, if you want.
I didn't see, I, well, I watched the beginning of it.
Yeah, so there's a, that's there, so people can, let me go backwards. So people can see the basic, but I don't think they answer every single zoning question. They answer the ones that are the biggest and cause the most confusion for people.
Please thank them for.
Yes.
Can you post that link in the video or the video on the page, Facebook, in the buzz?
Some buzz tomorrow.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah, we can also, I, we can also share this whole page out to the Facebook page too, so. Then I'm, I'm not done yet. I did most of this this afternoon. So town meeting day Saturday, March 15th. It tells where it is at 9:00 AM. And then once, when we start doing the YouTube link, that will be in there for people to watch. Article nine starts with the budget. And I've added the MS 737, the budget, our proposed budget, our Excel sheet, which is the budget committee. And then the proposed revenues article, and then it goes right down through the articles. I don't have, I'm going to fix that. I don't like that. I'll fix that. Um, I don't have something on every article explaining it yet. But, but we will start adding stuff in there, so. And it goes all the way down to the bottom. But I'm going to fix some of this because it didn't look like this when I was typing it, when I was setting it up, so.
So any, what do you guys think about doing like a Q and A with one of us on warrant articles, like they did.
With John.
Like John and Bruce did.
I mean.
Yeah, that wouldn't hurt.
We were going to look at the, like a voters guide thing you could hand out at town meeting. I know that's something Carol Brown's asked for. I just don't want to commit to it and then run into problems getting something done, so.
I think it'd be easier to put a video together than it would be to be, to do something in print. Kate, is that?
Definitely.
Yeah.
We could do that in an afternoon.
I think we should look at doing that. Maybe if you wanted to come up with a list of questions.
Yes.
Something like that. I know, I don't want to put more in place, but I just.
You could even put something out on what kind of questions would put the post, the warrant articles.
Not, not so much questions, but.
Why these might be certain.
Yeah, like it'd be, like it'd be good to do with Bruce, like.
Yes.
If Bruce was willing to do it and he could say, so Scott, you know, what's this, you know? Why are we spending this money?
I can find out if he's, he had to, he was going to be gone for a period of time again, so I can.
But it doesn't have to be him, it could be somebody else from the community, you know?
Even John could probably do, ask you the questions, so we could set that up.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So that's all, if, if there's something more or something really specific about these articles you want to see besides the video up here, just let me know. The only, so the only thing right now is the budget article has the documents that go with it. And then fireworks, and that's on the tier report to point out, so I'll tell you that. Um, when I signed the contract, we read it. I have to fix this. The contract is actually. The contract is actually for eighteen thousand five hundred, so it did go up five hundred with that from last year, so I'll fix that on this page to eighteen thousand five hundred. I did put that, I booked it, and I let them know that the fireworks company, this is pending funding, funding, and that we would have to cancel it if we can't fix the funding.
We need to be prepared to provide a cost breakdown on that at town meeting.
Yeah, so it's eighteen, so eighteen thousand five hundred is just the fireworks, the rest we is, I didn't add that, but food vendors, entertainment, the porta potties.
And Carol won't be here.
Carol won't be here, we're picking, we're gonna be paying, we have a music, we're paying more for music this year, because we, Carol can't be there for the four.
We need to get a meeting to go on that soon and then later. Now, that's just as much my fault as.
We could do it the first week of March. I can set something up.
Because I, I really wanna get moving, or get in motion the whole friends of the fork, or something like it idea for next year, because we are asking taxpayers to shovel out a lot of money, and the other thing I wanna do is, you know, figure out how we can approach the other towns to get them to contribute as well.
If I'm looking at dates real quick, just so I can match your calendar, Rob, because you're the representative, the first week of March. So next week's out, but the first week of March, I think we were doing Wednesdays.
Wednesday mornings are good for me.
So March fifth is nineteen thirty nine o'clock.
Yeah, eight thirty nine is fine.
We're in the March fifth. Oh, that's not, that's not already gone, it's next week, sorry.
Yeah.
It's the week after.
It's the week after, yeah. Okay, I'll get that out tomorrow. Other than that, there's nothing else. Ben is doing a PowerPoint on, a PowerPoint, like he's gonna speak, do the PowerPoint, but he's gonna narrate it. He's working on that for Article fourteen, so we'll have that up there, and then. We'll go from here.
At our, our next meeting, we'll review and talk about who's gonna discuss or present each article.
Yeah, I put that on your schedule already, so. Next meeting is probably gonna be a little bit longer than meeting, so March sixth, a heads up, because we would do the motion, the siding motions and.
The truth is.
Plus we're doing the town court dedication.
Yeah.
Plus. What was the other plus calendar? I don't think the other department head's coming, so if you wanna go back to Raymond now.
Yeah, how much do you, do you have much left? Just finish, you have four things.
Okay, attorney changes, we kind of already touched base. We received notification that our attorney, Johnston, will not, will not be returning to Jevon Woodson. She has resigned from law firm practice. Sean Tany is also one of our assigned attorneys, and Haley has been signed as our primary contact now. I have no concerns with this change, as Sean has been with us for everything, to Gardner Fulton and moi. But I just wanted, Christine was an excellent Landry's source, and Sean is, too, and I just wanted to double check if there are any concerns from the board. Sean is going to be at town meeting, I've scheduled, he's already, he called and we talked to him, he's already scheduled him to be there, so.
I love watching him up front.
I know, I know, he gets closer to the edge of his seat and you think he's probably gonna tell you something, so. But eighty-five Lake Street, we did post.
Why would we consider a separate bid when it's?
Well, that's what I'm asking, I just wanna make sure.
We've already posted it as two different, as, as, as two.
We posted it as one bid, but two lots.
Right.
So I just want, I wanted to make sure I asked a question before it happened.
That's just kinda all about the can where else.
Yeah, I didn't think we should.
My fear is that that would discover some vendors.
So for the public, if you're watching, we, there are two lots on eighty-five Lake Street. It is posted. I'll go back to this after. It is posted, there's a picture, there's an advertisement for the sealed bid here. It explains that the bid must be in dollars and cents, it can't be a thousand over the maximum. It can't be a not to exceed maximum, it needs to be what you wanna purchase the property for, if you're putting a bid in. The property card does show only one lot right now, that is not accurate, it is two lots. The assessor will fix that, but they will be sold together, they won't be sold separate. And I, I did put a note, I guess I should make, on here, that will be updated with second property card once assessing fixes. The property map, when I looked at it today, I just realized this one should have highlighted, too, so I'll replace that tomorrow. So it's these two lots together, they're separate, but they are going to be sold together, so I just wanna keep, make sure the public knows. This is the sample purchase agreement. I've sent all of this to the town's attorney, I'm asking, because I'm asking them to do the deed in advance, so there's no delays on this. This is the deed for, for people who wanna look at it. This is the deed for the smaller parcel on the side, and then there's a deed for the actual building property here. And then the last thing we, we did was a bid form. It does say submitted here with, for both parcel numbers. It's in number, inwards, dollars and cents, name of bidder, address, contact person, email, so. This is also posted in the lobby. It was emailed to females or contacted every person that I communicated with during this process, and even people who've been interested before we sold it. I let them know it was out for bid, and then if you could take a look at the email in the TA report from the fire chief.
Eighty-five Lake Street updates?
Yes, there's two things in there. I've just got my wrong screens up. There you go, on the wrong one, sorry. There's two comments in there. The first one is, this is things we've talked about already about the alarm system. I wanted you to read through this and the two things that are going on right now, what your thoughts are. I said, my thoughts are no on the first one, but then I was a little concerned in the interim. It's the eighty-five Lake Street in the TA report discussion items.
Okay, oh, is this the first?
Yeah.
All right, so, it basically, there's an issue with the alarm system.
Yeah.
Which I was directly involved with. So the box alarm system and the sys, the building, the system for the building itself are tied in as one entity, basically. I attempted to basically trick the system into thinking that the, the outside municipal system was still have been running, because there's issues there, and they're getting phone calls every day about this, that the system's in trouble. I failed miserably, was not able to do that. But that said, there's also an internal problem with the system itself that's in trouble. So, full disclosure, anyone that buys the building, and they have to do this.
Regardless.
Regardless, and with any alterations that were made or anything, that they're gonna have to have an alarm company come in to service the system and to monitor the system. Right now, the building is not monitored. I'm not overly concerned about it. The building is energized still, but there's not a lot of combustible material in the building or issues, things that could cause, outside of the heating system, that could cause a fire hazard. So I think we'd be spending a lot of money to have them come in and put a cell dialer in, and by the time we even get somebody to do that, that the sale, I mean, we're looking at March sixth, so, I mean, I, I'd be, I don't, I'm curious to see what everybody else thinks.
Okay, March sixth, we're closing bids, but it could be another thirty days after that.
Sure.
But knock on, I don't wanna say it out loud, I'm sorry.
Knock on the brick.
Knock over it.
But it's, you know, once temperatures warm up, we can also shut down. We could probably shut down the power and everything in the building and shut the heating system down.
Yeah, the second part, the second part that I don't have an update on, but it may be the same issues that we had this building.
Yeah, so there, there is, there's also concern that there's a potential frozen drain line in the building that the fire chief and the water and sewer supercanal are laying into, so.
I think we're gonna find it's getting resolved, the temperatures are coming up a little, too, so.
Yeah, so, okay, next.
Landry's chapter, it's in your folders, I'm gonna remember to send it in to you tomorrow.
I'm gonna see that.
They have to be submitted before next week's planning board meeting. Joanne has received some feedback from HTC, but no other feedback has been submitted. So I'm gonna remind department heads tomorrow, I'll try, and I'm gonna remind the committees tomorrow, and then I'll send you out a copy again, and remind, and if you can take a look at it, that would be great. Feedback can go directly to Joanne, and she'll gather it all for the planning board meeting next week. I haven't done mine either. I told Joanne I would read it and do my feedback, too, so.
Fireworks, we already covered.
Yeah, road postings, effective Monday, March third, the highway department will be imposing the roads with weight restrictions for the authority designated under the RSA's. If someone needs to exceed the road postings, they will need to talk with the highway department, who is able to issue a permit to exceed the limits in some circumstances, but only on town roads. After tonight's select board meeting, the postings will be added to the website and will, Kate, if I can get it in the buzz, that would be good, I'll send it to you.
So the board needs to, that, those postings are on the authority of the board?
So in the past with Mark, we, Mark would just notify you that it was done, and, but if you, when I was doing it with Mark, we would bring it to the board and vote on it. Then it changed, and Mark would just notify you, and you were, but we can change it back to have you. So, I'm sorry.
Or it, it said, it literally says per order of select on the sides.
So that's why we tried to do it before he posted, so he's recommending March third, if you, and it probably should.
Meeting, March sixth?
Yeah.
Do you wanna make a motion tonight?
Yeah, I would say, yeah. So somebody wants to?
I put the flyer, I mean, I put the posting in your folders if you wanna look at it.
The concern is that is when we get into the freeze thaw cycle, which we should be into it by then, but.
So we would want, we'd wanna give the highway department permission to. I'd make a motion to approve the highways request, oppose the roads, effective Monday, March third, with weight restrictions, apparently authority designated under RSA. And if someone does need to exceed the road postings, they can talk to the highway department, and they may be able to issue a permit.
Yeah, highway, can you get somebody, give the highway permission to?
Second.
Okay, motion by Les, second by Scott, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye. What I'll do with Victor is just let him know that we're, we wanna go back to making sure that we're voted on, so. Someone up there, no? I think they want right back out. NRRA materials management contract, there was some discussions on this contract, which caused a delay. There are no changes to the MSW hauling, the glass hauling, or the disposal and the weight, the weight, those are all the same. The weight term charge is all the same. The only thing that changes, the C and D stays the same from January to March, and then on March fifteenth, the price per ton goes up five dollars per ton, goes from a hundred to a hundred and fifteen. If the board is okay with that, everything else is the same, I would just need a motion and backdate it till January first, and then the contract would go through the end of December.
Question on that.
Yeah.
You said it goes up five dollars per?
Per ton.
You said a hundred to a hundred and fifteen.
Yeah.
So it's fifteen.
Oh, I said, did I say it wrong? Hang on, never mind. It goes up fifteen dollars per ton, sorry. I can't ask. Thank you for pointing that out, Scott.
Who said five in the mouth?
I said five, that was my fault. So it does go, sorry, the construction and demolition goes from, on March fifteenth, it goes up to a hundred and fifteen per ton. We do, we may need to look at our C and D costs then, and I'll talk to Chuck about that. There was only five, but fifteen, I don't know how much that'll affect it, so I can talk to Chuck and have him get some numbers together.
So it goes up five dollars, fifteen dollars, or a hundred and fifteen dollars?
Fifteen dollars.
Somebody just said, I just.
Well, it was, yeah. It was, I wrote the wrong thing. It goes from, so that's the tipping fee. So the tipping fee right now is a hundred dollars per ton.
So it will be a hundred and fifteen.
It will be a hundred and fifteen after March.
So I went entertaining motion to allow the town administrator to sign the con, the updated contracted, contract for NRR, NRRA materials management contract, backdated to January first, two thousand twenty-five.
Sorry.
Okay, I made the motion then, all right.
Oh, sorry.
I said entertaining, but I'll make that motion, you can second it. Any discussion? All is in favor?
All right.
You can take a motion. Paul makes the motions in budget.
Oh, I noticed, very, very cool of that.
Summer Street solar, we've been served a proof of service for this Bristol Summer Street solar project. There's a full site plan review scheduled for two twenty-six at seven PM. We received it, because we, it busts, I think, across the street. Actually, it's a, it's regional impact, I think, that's why we receive it. Would the board like to see the plans for the solar? It's on the hill. Or do you have any concerns that you would want brought to the planning board? I can send you the plans tomorrow. Scott's our planning board rep.
Did they change much from your original?
I haven't seen the plans, I just got served the notice, so I can get the plans and send them out.
I, I remember the plans from the original proposal. I think it was just the P and C at the time.
I think the, yeah, the PCC, they only, PCC is a preliminary conceptual consultation. The only thing, they, they, they might have have a lot more information about drainage, because there's a lot of concerns of drainage and coming down on people's property, so I think they probably have tried to address that. The driveway going in, they already have, I believe they already went and got.
Permit from the state?
No, they had to do a permit from the state, but I think because it exceeded a percent slope, they had to go get permission for that, and then the other thing is because up on the slope, they're close to wetland insulation, I believe they went through that processor, too. So this is the site plan, where it lays out all of the kilowatts of the solar, so.
So the planning board's done their due diligence on that, we shouldn't have to worry about that.
But, yeah, and I, I believe they, didn't they come back again?
I think they, well, because one was a special use permit, because they were close to wetlands.
That's all.
Oh, and you know what, they did have to have a conditional use permit for the slope on the driveway, I think. So they've been to the planning board twice, technically. This is their full site plan. I don't think it's changed, except for adding some calculations for drainage, so.
Yeah, now it's gonna seem like you're very well thought of, and not gonna have a lot of impact to your soils and terrain.
It, it will be seen. I mean, it is a pretty good sized solar array, but I think that once if, once the other stuff starts to grow back in, it won't be as bad, so.
They're gonna, they're gonna leave a buffer, and there's, they're gonna plant, some plantings to.
All right, that last item, looking.
I forgot to tell you that.
This should be a toll of service announcement.
Yeah, stop never flushing paper towels, please.
Is that what the cost was? Yes, and I, so I already spoke to Christina about this, and she's looking into, uh, like an electric hand dryer or something, so we can.
For my bag.
Paper towel, potential issue?
It got clogged, and because it was clogged, it froze, but that wasn't the only reason it froze. There was another issue from the outside that froze. Um, so we have to repair that pipe in the spring. We're gonna try and do something different over here, because this is the third time that paper towels have been flushed.
I think we need cameras in the bathrooms.
Half of these stores are. We have the.
I was just kidding.
Oh my God, I can hear it now. No, there are no.
Alright, great, I can hold up.
Wait, um, 85 Lake Street, I just need to go back and tell people there is a, an open house this weekend. Um, for anybody who's interested in looking at the 85 Lake Street Fire Department building for bid purposes. Um, it is from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday. Um, it is posted to on the website. It's also the second, we have two scheduled, um, ones, the one this weekend I'm gonna cover, Ben's covering the next one. Um, March 3rd is, and from 2:00 to 4:00, so right before bids are due, we're having a second one, okay?
Nice.
Sorry, go ahead. And while Rain is coming up to get comfortable, this is missing a signature from the chair. It was the transfer station report. Um, you guys cut the memo, but it needs the chair signature on the back page.
Oh, I see.
Okay. In your folders or in your T folders, I added, um, our election closeouts for the last two elections. On your number five, in case you wanted to look at it, but other than that.
Okay. I'm just here to find out who's gonna be at, uh, voting, March 11th, who's gonna be there. Of course, we got two that aren't here tonight, so they definitely gonna be there. You volunteer them when they're not here, right?
I will be here for the morning.
You'll be for the morning?
Yeah, for lunch time.
Okay. Scott?
I need to check. Let me go get my phone. Just let her know afterwards, until the meeting, yeah?
I can reach out to Dawn and Carol and just confirm both of them.
So we need at least three there.
I'll add you to that.
I, I can probably reschedule some stuff to be there. You can be there till what?
I can be there till now, at least.
Alright, so.
I could, potentially, I may end up being there the whole day, but as of right now, no.
I'll stay from noon on, but potentially, if you need somebody in the morning, I can, I'll just switch things around.
Okay. No one has volunteered to try to do, get lunches together, so I don't know if it's better just to try to, I need to ask the ballot clerks and the supervisors to bring their own, or what?
Didn't we put it in the budget so that we could pay for that? Oh, we haven't passed it yet.
Order some pizzas and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, I think we, we put a.
Well, do you wanna order just pizzas at night? Because I'll try, I'll, I'll do what I've always done, which is the donuts and coffee, but I just don't know.
Whatever you feel you need to do, I just, I, I feel like people have less and less time now to make stuff and bring stuff in, and that's why we set money aside to be able to, whether it's run up to Hanford and grab some, you know, call Hanford, get some prepared, or, oh, hard time talking about. Pre-prepared finger sandwiches for lunch and then provide pizzas for dinner, or, you know, um, it's not gonna be anything extravagant, but.
Right.
I don't mind doing money in to do platters.
Coffee and donuts.
We can, um.
We just, we don't want you spending.
You should not be paying for coffee and donuts.
Yeah, we don't want you and Cheryl paying for it, we don't want Ned paying for it, we don't want us paying for it. So we, we opted not to take a pay increase this year and instead have money to be able to spend on you folks.
Thank you, alright.
Or not, well, it's your job, but the election volunteers and such, and, uh, so that was the idea behind that, so.
Well, whatever we are into this budget, that we sell.
Yep, so work with Christina, and whatever you think we need there, the town will cover within reason, obviously, but.
Alright.
If we do platters, we usually just order them ahead, and we can arrange to pick them up.
Do what?
Yep, for, from Hanford.
Yep.
We'll get sandwich platters.
Sandwiches, cookies, chips, whatever.
I'll probably bring a stew anyway, these two stuff.
Yeah, bring something too, and then pizza for dinner.
People wanna bring stuff, great, but I, it's just, we, unfortunately, we don't have, we're running out of people that have the time to be able to.
Right, I agree.
Head that stuff up and.
It is hard, yep. Okay, so we'll do.
Yeah, we gotta have food.
Yeah, that's right.
We won't have any volunteers left if we don't.
That's right. And then, I think we both thought the police and highway are gonna be here tonight just to check in with Chris to make sure he's got people that can be outside.
You can relay.
Yeah, we want to clear your, um, I, uh, Chris, something came up and I said you didn't have to try and zoom while he was driving. So I am, I, if we could just be clear on what the board, I don't think this election is gonna be anything like the one.
It's not gonna be anything like the presidential.
Yeah.
No, I don't think you're gonna need traffic control on the school street like we had, but there needs to be an officer out in front of the building for the entirety of the.
Right.
I, I just say if they need to go in and warm up or take a break or something, that's fine. And whether it's four different officers, but there needs to be an officer dedicated to that post.
And then, do you want to do the deep, the one-way street again, a one-way around, okay?
Yep, and make, and make sure that spruce is blocked off, just to eliminate that. I would just.
And are you gonna have someone?
School winter spruce all one way.
Sorry.
That'll eliminate that issue.
One-way street, so I can get with Victor and make sure that those are ready to go. So officer one, all day, eight to seven, right? And it can be split, but just one.
I don't care if it's, uh, uh, you know, the, the concern in the past was that it was a, uh, you know, it was put out as an extra detail and nobody wanted to take it, and it's, somebody has to take it, it's not an option. So can't be just having the patrol guy stop by, because they're, they're too busy.
Yep.
So yeah, the two of them could work together on the traffic flow and signs and whatever help they either need from the other.
Okay.
And then we're, you're gonna get volunteers for the shuttle?
That's what I was gonna ask, yeah.
Um, we'll park the shuttle in the front, we'll shuttle signs, um, I have a worksheet for, um, a question was if you were gonna, wanted to do three-hour blocks. The, the one we used before. Apparently, I still can't, wetland. Um, the one we used before did three-hour blocks, eight to 11, 11 to 2, 2 to 5, and then it was two hours at the end of the night. So there were four volunteers, and actually, I gotta update this, we don't have any training with that.
Have you ever looked into the insurance to make sure we're covered with non-town employees operating town vehicles?
I thought, we did, we have them sign a volunteer waiver.
Okay.
Um, that's what, so the, I didn't take the training, this was training with the Highway Department on this forum was for when we were using the UTV. But we have a volunteer waiver, we have them sign, whether it's the UTV or the town vehicle. Um, so that's, we'll still do that, uh, and then we'll, we'll get four people and we'll sign them up.
Could probably volunteer filled eye on again.
Yeah, who should get?
What'd you say?
I could volunteer filled eye on again. Oh, yeah.
Um, so I will also add to the website page, the, the shuttle. Um, I'll put it in the news item too, because I think people some, may not know to go to the other page to look, and I'll put a news item out, so.
Does someone keep Bristol written?
We've already, um, started the heat, we, um, automatic deliveries on the heat, because, um, they're opening the building next week. They've already filled the tank. Last week, they climbed through the snow. We, we tried to stop them because we were like, no, don't go until we clean it up, but, so the building will be open next week. Um, Deb's got it on her calendar to go in and just make, we, we pulled supplies out of that building for the winter. We're gonna, we'll go make sure everything's stocked before, by the end of the week for you. Um, water will be on by the end of the week, and he there's supposed to check and make sure everything's running smoothly. And I think that, I was trying to think if there's any, oh, we said something about, not to offend, we know, is there something about the ramp?
Painting?
We won't, well, we won't have that, but, but I'm trying to remember.
Well, it was, it needs to be clear, wood from snow and ice.
Oh, I, it's probably to do with the, uh, have the hazards of the snow or ice coming off the eaves.
Yeah.
Cause if it is there, it needs to be shut down.
They won't have handicap access if we don't have that.
Well, I'd much rather not have handicap access than have a slab of ice come down on somebody in a wheelchair.
And what's the Highway Department?
I agree with you totally, but.
We will, we will certainly make other accommodations.
Yeah, because the state.
No, 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 that, I'm not saying.
No, I mean, they, they, they won't accept not having a handicap way to get in, that's what I'm saying. I, I agree with what you're saying. It's better not to have one than have an ice fall on somebody. But the state, if they show up, which they do sometimes during town elections, they won't be happy at all, they'll be.
Well, we can discourage the use of it and try to get people, assist people coming in the front door rather than having people do that.
Right.
Cause they're in a wheelchair, but we're gonna have to.
Yeah, well, get your muscles on, let's both push them up there.
A lot of people wouldn't like that.
Can we build a temporary ramp or not, or, do we have any ramping that we use the Highway Department?
I think that's, I don't think it's necessary.
I want those to get up.
Chances are, it's not gonna be a problem.
That'd be scary.
Cause it usually warms up enough by then.
Yeah.
Well, and the Highway Department can check the, make sure there's no snow, they might be able to clear with roof rain.
That could be pretty long one for.
I do love roof rain. I'm doing, I hate it, you can have it, no kidding.
I can't remember. Let's look at it.
It's a, it's, it's not shaggle, but it's, um, it's, it's a different metal, it's a.
Yeah, but it's metal, so it should come off.
I think it, I think it comes off on that.
Well, hopefully, it's not an issue, we're just wasting our time.
Some labs.
Alright, anything else on elections, Raymond?
Just, um, I talked to Victor, but we didn't get a date that he's gonna set it up, I don't know if he, but they're gonna, they'll probably be setting it up.
They have to have it open by Wednesday, because Jeff wanted it to be open for at least two days, so they could check the water. But I don't know if they're gonna set up at that same timeframe. Oh, this, nevermind, this is the week after, I'm sorry.
Yep, they're gonna, they always let me know when they're gonna set it up, but we just haven't.
That's something you can, we're able to have, interestingly.
So that'll be all set up.
Alright, well, thank you for coming in.
I think that's it.
I was just looking back at your, I think that's everything, because we, we talked about detours. Um, concerns, again, for the public, this should be the last elections that we do at the historic town hall. Uh, it's already on the calendars for 226 to be at the high school. Um, and they're doing a teacher and service day or something like that, yeah, so, so that's all set.
Everything will be closed at the school, but maybe teachers are there.
Select for it at once.
Thank you, Raymond.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. I can't think of anything.
I, can I add an update for something less hot, obviously?
We want to go with that.
I have, from yours, so I went and looked at the, I was gonna take the sign down, because I thought the whole sign broke. It's, it's just the, it's just the, so the back is still on, it's the sign piece, you can see where it was glued on.
Yeah.
I'm gonna leave that up.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Well, I'm a little like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'm gonna leave the sign up, because instead of trying to take it down, I'm gonna have the sign works, um, I'll send them a picture and get a quote from them. That was one of the sides we knew we had to fix.
Just to fix that down?
Well, we may, no, because there's a piece that broke, the piece that came off, it wasn't even the piece that was broken. So, um, I'll get a quote from them, so.
I'm not against your suggestion.
Which one's that?
Sign just goes away there.
Oh.
I mean, it's not an entrance to town.
You know, I think that was, was it just, that was my question.
Well, do you, that's a question, do you want it?
I think a couple of us agreed on it. I didn't make the suggestion, but I think we.
What do you guys think, I?
Just get rid of it.
Got anything different on that one?
I'm trying, was, there was never, there wasn't a sign there before, I don't believe.
It was, um, there was a Rotary, Rotary Lions Club sign, but it sat, so.
That's where it was.
This side's the back.
Like to the left.
It was to the diagonal of the bank.
All those old signs, yeah.
Oh, and I still have all of the old signs. Um, so it was there, so the question.
You can always take it down, and if people complain, then we can put money in the church budget to replace it.
My only concern is if we take it down, it's state and church where it's located. We don't, where, we don't own where it is.
So if we let it go, then we might not be able to go back.
I'm one, I'm not saying that would happen, but my own, that was my only concern. If you don't think we want one there, we can get rid of it, um, but.
Can, can you pull, take some pictures of it, just from afar, and then cross up, and then we can decide.
Yep, I went to pull, there's no place to pull over this morning, so I'm like, I can't take a picture. I can go across the street though, take them, so.
Yeah, I forgot there was a sign there before, because all the other signs are the entries into town. But we don't have one in the Bridgewater, it's the town line. We probably know where to put that.
Right on the front, on a basic ingredients.
I was thinking they might be open to.
Um, surely, probably don't want that. Um, anything else?
No.
Scott? Uh, one quick thing, I had a comment made to me today about uh, snow removal being done on North Main Street while kids are getting dropped off at school, and buses are going through there this morning. Um, and when I went down there, they were still there, um, which created a traffic issue. Not a big deal, it's not something that's gonna happen on a regular basis. I don't think they were really doing anything wrong, so please don't relay it as that, but I would just say, like, any unnecessary snow removal to not be done between, what is it, like, 7:00 and 8:00, and 2:00 and 3:00?
Yeah.
While traffic's on there.
That road is pretty.
Yeah, cause it looked like, like, there were cars, like, when I came down, cars were backing out into, into the square.
Yeah, that is a tough area, and the pickleballers are parked on both sides, and then construction vehicles toward the bank and us, and.
Um, that said, uh, could you also talk to them about making sure all the spaces on the left side of North Main are opened up? Uh, because parking's getting pretty limited down there.
I, yes, I will. I have a good comment, actually, um, I haven't shared with them yet. Um, this is the library, please thank the Highway Department for their hard work on their lot this morning.
Yeah, I saw Trevor down there with a load, no, they, so everything they did, they did a great job, that's why I don't want it to come back as a negative, she's, it was just bad timing.
Yeah, it was just, it's a warmer day and it was bad timing, so, um, she said they spent half hour there this morning and made it so much cleaner and safer for the staff and patrons.
And, and on top of that, they, from what I saw, did a fantastic job during the storm.
Wicked storm, for that, though.
I think they also went over to the 85 Lake Street. I talked to Victor about, um, not push, where, when they're pushing the snow, not to push it over, um, but I think they cleaned some of that out of there, so.
Have we resolved it all, the salt on Washoe Road?
That's the state. We talked briefly about it. Did you follow up on that, the, uh, Maple Grove and Hall Road area, using salt over there?
No.
Cause it's marked, it is marked a drinking water protection area. And I noticed that they used all the salt there a couple storms ago.
So I need to confirm if we do have a policy on it, if it's marked a drinking water protection area. If it's marked a drinking water protection area, I think Jeff has policy. Conservation Commission did talk about it. Um, they are gonna pursue it, but I did not follow up.
Okay, so I, I wasn't sure how we had left it. You know, at this point in the year, it's.
Well, yeah, Carol was gonna be on that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he's staying, um, so even though he's moving from the slum board, he is staying on Conservation Commission.
Good.
They should be finalizing the wastewater quality study group report in the next month, no, April. And so it'll be coming before you soon, so.
I'd love to see us cut down on salt usage and cost.
I do, I just thought of something and it relates to plowing. So, uh, there was a question on Facebook and so, so I guess we were, there are private citizens that are plowing in the spring.
Yes.
And.
Plowing the plunky spring, is that weird? Yes.
Is that, I mean, it's town property.
We're not asking them to do it.
It's state property.
Does the town, that's state property?
The state plows usually, but private, so it is Conservation Commission responsibility for the spring part. But the state part is the parking and the sides, the, there's two turn-ins there and then the state.
So we don't, the town, you know, has plowed that before?
No.
Okay.
We don't plow it. We don't, we do put out a bucket of sand to help with the Conservation Commission. They fill it, they sand it.
Okay.
And they take care of it.
Alright.
The only other announcement maybe would be, it's the Winter Fest in Alexandria Fishing Derby this weekend. Winter Fest is at the, I think, across from the end, the Nufall weekend. Um, but that is also a fundraiser for N R R A. You could go and donate. They're gonna be doing the full advantage, so we'll go to support.
And also, people could support the Alexandria Fishing Derby. Our Alexandria Volunteer Fire Department.
If you just stop by to grab food.
Yep, or Ralph and Tegid or, yeah.
I was gonna say, isn't this the first one they've been able to have in how many years?
One or two years, yeah.
Two or three.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, two great events this weekend, so. Uh, all in common, it's great.
You got anything?
I think it's been working these days.
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
O M G. I would make a motion to adjourn at six forty-six P M. That's on record.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do, do you not expect that at your next meeting?